We call the meeting to order. Town and Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting, Monday, September 10, 2018. If we could begin with a moment of silence, that would be great. Thank you. Mr. Farrell?
Sir. Would everyone rise for a please? Please leave.
So we have our consent agenda as well as our regular agenda, so it can be a motion to approve the regular agenda to modify it.
I've got a motion to approve the consent agenda, and I'd like to offer one very minor connection or correction to events. Page nine, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down, we are returning to Becky's side as this will. We'll see if she might appreciate the miss.
Okay. If there are no more corrections or additions, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Called in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll go directly into regular meeting agenda with citizens. We've got several which has signed up to speak this afternoon, this evening. We will begin with Emily Sutton.
Hello. My name is Emily Sutton. I'm the Hall River Keeper with Hall River Assembly. We represent over a thousand members in the watershed. The Hall River Assembly believes that the community members of Pittsburgh deserve to know what the town of Pittsburgh and Chatham Park have brought contested cases before the Office of Administrative Hearing in regards to the May 3, 2018, letter from North Carolina Division of Water Quality, and that there's a stay on the hearing while discussions take place between the parties. Public transparency would benefit all of us who have a stake in the outcome of this process. We've learned of this information through public records requests, and we have sent you all the relevant documents. We see that the contested case hearings have been stayed until October 9th for the following reasons. Council for Respondents, Council for Petitioners, and Council for the Town have been actively engaged in discussions with each other regarding potential settlement of this matter, and Council for both parties desire additional time to continue their discussions toward the goal of resolving their respective concerns without the need for litigation. It is great to know that the commitments made by the town of Pittsburgh in the environmental impact statement for 2010 NPDES permit which apply to the lands owned by Chatham Park are being discussed with the state. We hope this will result in a much more protective measures for being taken, much more protective measures being taken for storm water management and buffers to protect the streams in the Hall River as Chatham Park is built, in addition to other measures. As a reminder, the requirement is that there be no change in rate or quantity of storm water runoff in the area adjacent to the Hall from pre-development levels. As currently designed, this would not be feasible with the density and inadequate buffers in this project area. The Hall River Assembly believes that the public deserves to know what these discussions entail since our air and water quality in the area surrounding Pittsburgh will be greatly impacted by the development of Chatham Park, as well as the health of the aquatic ecosystem of the Hall River. Community members have voiced their concern with this project, and it is alarming to see that the town has sided with Chatham Park in this contested case before the state agency. We believe the town of Pittsburgh should live up to their commitments to protect the Hall River made in 2010, and insist that Chatham Park take greater measures to protect water quality in this massive development instead of contesting it. Thank you.
Do you have copies of that?
Of the letter or the contested case? Of our letter?
Of our letter.
Yes.
You can present it to the state.
I do.
In record.
I have sent it to the council and to all of you all, as well as the documents of the contested case.
I think it came this evening. Okay. Thank you very much. Connective, Ron Hatley, please.
My name is Ron Hatley. I live at 24 Roy Hapit Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I wish to address the state's demand that Pittsburgh live up to its commitments of the 2010 environmental impact statement. That stay has been requested and approved until October 9. Pittsburgh Town Board revealed the new Chatham Park North Village area plan last meeting in August 27. To state notified Pittsburgh, they needed to follow the mitigation strategies for new development north of Highway 64 for greater protection of the Hall River, especially buffers and storm water management. Pittsburgh had committed to these strategies in the environmental impact statement that was part of the 2010 NPDES for a wastewater permit. Pittsburgh and Chatham Park requested a stay with the Department of Environmental Quality, the Division of Water Resources. Both submitted and filed simultaneously July 11, 2018, with the Office of Administrative Hearings, as Emily brought spoke earlier. I'm curious as to why this has been kept from the public, and these two requests are identical in terms of verbiage that are used. With the addition of the Chatham Park request adds, and commitments and mitigation strategies would include adoption enforcement of ordinances that would restrict petitioners' use in development several thousand acres of the petitioner's real property, and would substantially reduce the value of the petitioner's property. It's imperative that Pittsburgh and Chatham Park follow the EIS and stormwater permits. The Pittsburgh Land Use Plan called for a 2,000-foot buffer along the Hall, not the 500-foot as stated in the current plan. In the final master plans produced by Chatham Park, the Chatham Park produced two pages on storm water, yet in that same final document, they have 14 pages on parking and unloading. I respectfully request that the board carefully examine their commitments and its stewards to our county and our people and our environment. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Can we get copies of?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Joy Newitt, please.
Thank you for allowing public comment. Joy Newitt, 3069 Philco, Gunsbridge Road, Pittsburgh. While businessmen were acquiring land in Chatham County for Preston Developments, Chatham Park, the land use plan for the county recommended one house per five acres average to protect the watershed of the Hall River. According to RA 5 zoning for the town of Pittsburgh, I believe lot minimums were required to be one house per five acres in the watershed. The recommended 2,000-foot undisturbed buffer along the river provides a natural resource to mitigate storm water runoff and flooding, to prevent, to preserve a tree canopy and wildlife corridor, to allow the scenic beauty along the river to remain for all to enjoy. Yet Chatham Park developers want to ignore all of that. They requested the planning board and the town commissioners to allow greater density in the watershed over the objections of many town and county residents. Now, when state agencies like the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission and the North Carolina Division of Water Resources express concerns about Chatham Park's plans that could impact aquatic life in the drinking water for thousands, the developers sue the state and complain they can't make as much profit on the acres they acquired if they have to protect the river. Local landowners in Chatham County along the Hall River can only build one house per five acres to protect the watershed, yet Chatham Park is getting away with greater density and thus profit off the acres they bought, and it's still not enough for them. It's a choice of greed versus the well-being of generations to come. The 300,000 who already drink water from Jordan Lake need for Chatham Park to leave forested areas along the river to protect ephemeral streams, to maintain the health of the river waters quality. Where the Hall River flows past state parkland, natural areas, and beyond Highway 64, the water quality is currently good enough for pollution-sensitive macroinvertebrates to thrive. The dense development close to the river that Chatham Park wants could damage that water quality. In many developments, density is one area, and one, density in one area helps preserve the environmental resources in another. Chatham Park developers are supposed to trade greater density for conservation of some natural areas that would not have their ecosystems and topography destroyed. That was the impression they created. Providing the 2,000-foot buffer along the river only seems fair for the greater density they plan. Now these developers bring a legal challenge against the state when they have to play by the rules, and are told to provide large, larger stream buffers and do much more to stop pollution from stormwater. More deeply disappointing is the town of Pittsburgh going along with this contested case. When protecting the water quality of the Hall River should be its responsibility to the county and town residents, and those who live downstream from us. The town board is at a moral crossroads. Once these natural resources are destroyed, future generations cannot benefit from them. The town board and Chatham Park need to provide more natural conservation area along the river. Destroying the largest unsegmented forest area in the tropical region to create generic concrete commercial areas and housing that local workers like teachers can't afford isn't a front enough for Mother Nature and county residents who love the Hall River. At least leave the 2,000-foot buffer on the Hall River as part of the natural resource conservation overlay. The town must reject Chatham Park's proposed North Village small area plans to develop so close to the river. The town board must live up to its 2010 agreement with the state to protect the Hall River. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Liz Colton. My address is 390 Rocky Hills, Rhode, Pittsburgh. Chatham Park Ambassador's June 4 petition for a contested case hearing regarding the NPDES EIS commitments states that enforcing the state's requirements, quote, "would restrict their use and development of several thousand acres of their real property, and would substantially reduce the value of their property." I'd like to start refuting that claim right there, but they weren't finished. They went on to claim that DEQ, Division of Water Resources, had deprived them of property, prejudiced their rights, exceeded its authority or jurisdiction, acted erroneously, failed to use proper procedure, acted arbitrarily or capriciously, and failed to act as required by law or rule, and shot their dog. Well, not really. Let's ignore that second list of over-the-top boilerplate whining, not just to get a foot in the door at the Office of Administrative Hearings. Going back to the beginning of their complaint, the original claim that Chatham Park makes, and off which it hangs these ugly ornaments, is complete nonsense, and it makes me wonder why the town attorney is mixed up in this, but also makes me wonder if he isn't being a little bit played, as finally for this hearing has conveniently allowed Chatham Park to be now wrangling the DEQ out of sight, under legal cover, over issues that have up to now been dealt with in public. Meanwhile, why is the basis for their claim bogus? Chatham Park's use and development of any of their property has never been totally unrestricted, and the areas subject to the limitations the town agreed to before Chatham Park's master plan was first filed in 2013, those areas are not subject to any detailed filed development plan, let alone an approved one. There isn't a plan filed with the town that they can't proceed with. The master plan allows certain maximum housing units and quantities of other building, but neither said or restricted precisely where those could or would go. Chatham Park hasn't already put a building somewhere the state had required a buffer to be, and in addition, the very fact that they own thousands of contiguous acres gives them more flexibility, greater by quantum orders of magnitude than other developers. Yet they're acting like some poor lot owner who finds they can't build a house after all, which does happen, but it isn't happening to them. Further, the state's pre-existing requirements cannot be demonstrated to reduce the value of the land since there's no approved site or subdivision plans for the areas in question. All Chatham Park has is land that's worth something more than they paid for. It re-zoned to the vague planned development district, but not yet worth what they eventually hoped it will be when site and subdivision plans are approved and the roads are built. That PDD zoning does not confer development rights to any particular uses or density to any particular acre, so there's no provable lost rights or lost value if that acre can't be built on. I think this is a really important point. So I think this whole thing is a bit of a bluff and a dodge, as I described, to try to count and badger our state officials behind closed doors. We've all seen the scene in TV cop shows and movies, except this time the roles are reversed about who might be roughing up who, or maybe practicing conversational friends, who can tell. Meanwhile, the town attorney's similar initial petition for administrative hearing, which was filed at the same time, didn't claim any such financial harm since it couldn't, so ticking all the possible checkboxes for improper agency action seems rather meaningless to me. What's worse, there was no closed or open session during which the entire board's permission was sought to initiate this action. The idea that the letter from the state implied a threat of enforcement action that was not stated is, it seems, absolutely no excuse. It shouldn't matter if the requirements at issue are in the EIS and aren't listed in the NPDES permit, but were conditions for the permit and commitments by the town. The town has been reminded of these requirements and commitments long before now, and was reminded days before the board first approved master plan in 2014. Chatham Park appeared to be aware then, as they added some language at the 11th hour regarding buffers. The town board did not insist on the density restrictions in 2014, and it's not clear if the board didn't read the letter, since it wasn't discussed, or maybe it seemed too soon, but it's not too soon now. Whether the town was guilty of bad faith or just incompetent, it doesn't seem to really matter. I fear that this legal challenge to the Department of Environmental Quality endangers the whole NPDES wastewater permit, which represents an important town asset and one hard won. Those permits aren't perpetual, and I fear that the way things are right now, it possibly wouldn't be renewed. We need to think about that. We should be grateful that the state is trying to protect our water and indeed, our permit, something that the town should have been doing all along. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Next, we have, we have a panel, please.
Hi. Good evening. I've spoken with you guys prior, and I sent you this email earlier this evening, and I copied the staff, and so I'd like to read that to you so the rest of the public can hear it. Thank you for this opportunity for me to speak and encourage you to protect our natural resources of the Hall River and its ecosystem. As we understand it, the North Carolina Division of Water Resources sent a letter to Pittsburgh, and this has all been said earlier, that you should be holding to the mitigation strategies with the new development north of the Highway 64 for greater protection of the Hall River, especially buffers and stormwater management. A petition for contested case hearing was filed by the town and accepted by the Office of Administrative Hearings in May, with the hearing set for the week of October 22nd. And here's the question for you. Is the town of Pittsburgh contesting that they should not be held to the agreement of the 2010 NPDES? Is that what you're contesting? That you shouldn't be held to that?
Yeah. Matthew McFlory responded to the letter, so he can respond.
And so then, the following question is, are you going back on your word as the town? Was every member of the board aware that the letter was sent by the town attorney back in May? Chatham Park also filed on the 4th of June to dispute it, and then both the town in Pittsburgh and Chatham Park asked for and were granted a stay until October 9th? And this is all against, you're not holding to the 2,000-foot buffer that you went ahead and said in 2010, or no, that was 14, for the land use plan? It's also, this area is map five of your UDO, the critical watershed area, and it's baffling that you're not honoring that plan and this critical watershed. So why is the town partnering and fighting with Chatham Park against the North Carolina Division of Water Resource, against the town's own land use plan, and against the best interests of the citizens of Pittsburgh and the citizens of Chatham County? So today, today is a good day for the town board, and the mayor's not here, but today is a good day to step forward and take action, to be exemplary, and direct Chatham Parks and the town staff to be exceptional in protecting water quality measures, especially in the North Village area. Please stop challenging the Division of Water Resources and be good stewards of this ecosystem, including the areas that are needed to protect the water quality of the Hall River and Jordan Lake's larger watershed. We implore you that you have to acknowledge that this value of this land is beyond any profit that can be put in somebody's pocket. This is, this is really important, and today's your day. Today's your day that you can step forward and do the honorable stewardship thing. Please. I mean, we're here asking you to stop this challenge against the state. Thank you.
We don't have anyone else with his sign up to speak at this time, so therefore this ends our public expression moment, and I thank each and every one of the speakers which have indicated their opinions, and certainly appreciate you providing letters to thank to their. We will now move on to the old business with special use permit request. This data.
We have special use permit request 2018-04. Matthew McFlory is requesting a special use permit to operate a propane refueling station at 136 Fayetteville Street. The property is zone C2, Highway Commercial. The proposed station will use a 500-gallon tank for refueling and approximately 1,300 square feet of the existing structure for office and retail space. Previously, staff had stated that total of 28 parking spaces were required for the current uses in the structure, but upon further review, the owner, but upon further review with owner, the required number of spaces for existing uses is 14. The proposed office and retail space for the propane business will require seven spaces, bringing the total number of required parking spaces to 21. Even with the change in required parking, staff finds that the parking currently in place at 136 Fayetteville Street cannot properly accommodate the necessary parking for the currently permitted tenants in the proposed office and retail space to accompany this refueling station. A public hearing was held on August 27th. No citizen presented evidence against the request. The applicant and property owner were present to answer questions from the Board of Commissioners. The planning board reviewed these plans at their meeting on September 5th. The board considered this location to be appropriate for an LP gas refueling station, and believed the site plan to have met the special use requirements of the zoning ordinance. The board maintained that the refueling station and the office and retail space, though operated by the same company, are separate uses and should be evaluated as such. The planning board recommended approval of the special use permit in a vote of 5 to 0. Despite the recommendation for approval of the special use permit, it was suggested to the owner that a site, that a site plan be put in place, or that a plan be put in place to meet the parking requirements for this facility. Staff is recommending denial of the request, as the plan does not meet all requirements of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance. And the owner and applicant are here. If you have any further questions?
I do have one question. So assuming that this business was to change hands in the future, this is a special use permit, so therefore, I know it has lasting impact at state. So if this has a somewhat different use in the future, like maybe it's all retail or something like that, how will that impact the parking space that the state is saying?
We, we, every time there's, with multi-tenant structures, we assess the parking situation when they come in for a zoning compliance certificate, and if the entire parking lot can't meet the needs of all tenants and the proposed use, then they're not.
So would not be, this number would not be a permanent number with the adjutant, with any business coming in?
If, yeah, if a new business came in, then maybe it would adjust.
What was required?
Is there a question from the board?
So just to clarify, this isn't our only fight at the Apple. If there were new businesses to be added at this location, it would be an opportunity by staff to approve or disapprove based on adequacy or inadequacy of the parking.
Correct.
And would that be on the special use permit again, or?
Well, with this one, it's kind of odd, and it's the reason why the planning board approved the special use permit, because the special use permit request before is for the refueling station, not necessarily the office and retail space that would come along with it, because office and retail, it's an allowed use in C2 zoning district. But, so technically, if the, if you all sign that the plan meets these requirements and any other requirements of the zoning ordinance, then it should be approved. However, staff is recommending denial because we feel that the requirements of the zoning ordinance for the accompanying uses would not meet, would not be the requirement, and we would end up denying the permit request when it came to staff, so.
Essentially, the state's usually been calling it all, so depends on what the usage, the system, or retail, whatever is permitted in C2, staff would most likely be able to do that administratively, issue that permit or deny that permit administratively. If it was a particular use, if it was a special use permit, like the refueling component, would you just do it?
Well, with a special use permit, one of the first things we need, well, one of the things we need to hurdle, we need to pass, is that none of us find that the application is incomplete. And I do find it incomplete. I find the site plan provided, does not provide me enough information to understand whether or not the project meets the standards of our code. One of the things I'll note is that there is flood plain on this property, and it appears as though some of the improvements proposed would be in the flood plain. I don't know how the land is proposed to be modified, if at all, in order to provide those improvements, therefore, I don't know if you are filling in the flood plain. We've had recent flooding events, and I suspect we may be having future flooding events this week, and we don't, I cannot. And we don't, I cannot tell. I've got some indication of scale, but only because there's an arrow drawn from something that is green to the fueling station that says it's 57 feet away. If that's a scale I can rely on, then several of the parking spaces are in that 50-foot distance, which I suspect is a stream buffer, which is not showing up on this plan. So for a myriad of reasons, I cannot make findings that allow me, I can't find the findings that is complete enough for me to understand its impact and therefore is compliant with our regulations. But I would recommend denial or make a motion of denial.
Would you like to?
Yeah. On the site plan, it is the scale.
Before you go into that, please identify yourself.
I'm sorry. I'm Matthew McFlory, and I'm the applicant for the special use permit 2018-04. The, I did this in a site planning software, and I know the footages aren't on there. But at the time, I was kind of told it didn't have to be, I don't know, as obviously to scale as you're requesting it be. But the parking spaces on this plot are nine by 18, which I've since found that they only have to be eight by 19. And they are to scale. I mean, I put quite a bit of time into this to make it to scale. But what we were trying to show for this, and if we can go back or next to the requirements on, I don't know where it was on the slide, but there. So to, I was trying to meet the requirements of the special use permit when I made this. And the requirements are that it's in a C2 district, which that's obvious from the planning. The maximum storage area, I actually did provide information for the storage tank itself and dimensions and capacity for 500-gallon propane tank, which does not exceed the 1,000 gallons that are required as a maximum from this. So I provided that. I don't know why it's not, they don't have it here, but I did provide that as well as ballers and protection. And then the dimensional requirements, it does meet all setbacks, I guess maybe I didn't put that in there. And then the site plan requirements, I did have the location and size of the refueling station. I put the truck on there for access and, and control of visual and safety impact. I mean, I did, I included baller specifications for going around that tank in the, in the parking area, which is not present here, and I don't, I don't know why. I did submit that with my application at the time. But that's what I was trying to convey on that site plan. Was the location of the tank, the size of the tank, and that it was 50 feet from that stream that's there because we were required to meet that rip area buffer at the time. And then that's for the special use permit for the propane tank. The parking has become this separate kind of issue that Mohammed has actually, we're, we're, we went out there and Mohammed actually marked several spaces in the pavement. To, yeah, in this format, actually, to have 13 spaces, 15 in the rear of the building, and then six in the front, which are existing. And all that stuff in the back, it's actually already, a lot of it's paved. It's just not, there's this town standard of paving that.
I mean, does it look like 15501? No, it doesn't. But it looks like a lot of, some county roads that we have back here that have some potholes in them. And so there's this. Is it paved? Yes, it's paved. I mean, it's all in a matter of what your definition of paved is. But the thing that really gets me is that this building has, has sat delectated and empty for years and years and years and years. And we finally took a chance and repaved the building, and we were trying to make something good out of it. And I can't tell you the council people that have come by and talked and told us how, how they're happy that we're doing what we're doing to it. And it takes money to do things. And then, you know, you, we're met with this simple requirement of a paved parking lot that we just simply don't have the funds to put into it at this time. But I need to rent it to Matthew so I can generate some income, so I can pay the parking lot for you. It's like a catch 22. Yet, you know, I told Victoria the other day that after I left this meeting, I went to pick my daughter up from, you know, behind the Pittsburgh U Theater, and I had some chance to stretch my legs, and I walked back behind Verly's and SunTrust. And that whole parking lot is nothing but crush and run. Yet, you know, they have maximum traffic compared to what we're going to have, but we're not allowed to have crush and run. They have to be paved to, to their standards. We're, we're less than a quarter mile away from Verly. Yet we're, we're having to live up to a different standard than they do. I had Victoria come out today, and I have all these spots marked. And they are unpaid parking spots. Again, if this, that's no, it's not. But this whole area is paved, every bit of it.
There is no desire to make your attempts at refurbishing this building any more difficult.
Should feel like it.
Well, you know, we're kind of stuck here. But we've, we've got regulations that say sort of things. And we honestly don't have the ability to waive them for some and not for others.
I think that's debatable.
Well, one issue we're waiving anything.
I think we've got a, an approval from the planning board.
Let me ask this question. We've, we've heard that planning staff does not think that it meets ordinance requirements. Does planning staff think that it's a complete application?
Yes.
You do? Do you think, but do you think that's a complete site plan?
According to the ordinance, there's, I think we've been over this before. It's a little iffy as to whether it should be done by a P E, a licensed engineer or surveyor. It says in the ordinance that the special use permit must provide a site plan.
Correct.
It does not specify for businesses under $3,000 square feet whether or not they have to be done by a professional engineer or like a surveyor.
Does that, does that allow it not to require or include all of the information associated with cycling?
Thank you. I'm towards lighting.
Well, lighting, landscaping, marking, flood plains, stream buffers, you know.
So what would it take to give this something to be, that's my question. What would it take?
Regarding lighting, we have progress energy coming in, putting in one pole here, another pole here, to light the whole parking lot and floodlight in all directions.
Maybe we try to incomplete and have that, you know, like that. At some other time when they have a complete act.
But what would it take to make it?
Yeah, I guess my question to you.
Commissioner Fioco is, is, almost something that a normal site plan would require lighting and other elements of, of the livable site. Does that, that, but the, the, it's, it's difficult that a special use permit is required for a residential propane tank. The business he can run is permitted. It's retail. We could issue a permit if, if the parking was found to be past factory. That's fine. We could, we could do that, we could operate this, this, this use of refueling propane that is causing a special use permit. So what's the, what's the goal of the town to have all these other requirements for this residential sized tank for this business owner to provide? So what's the key component here is parking? So we're trying to, trying to make sure that parking. Staff feels like there's not, there's not enough sufficient parking there. That's an issue. Now I'm hearing about light going in. That would be an issue that we would want to see. We'd want to make sure that white levels are going to be appropriated for that area.
Same kind of light on it there right here. Lighting here.
I did show again two floodlights around the.
Around the wall, on the wall.
But so is it typical for a business to have, I mean, an entire site plan for somebody moving into an already existing building?
Not as a permitted use.
Yeah, so that's, I mean. I get that it's required, but it's very, it's a very steep hurdle, I think.
Agreed. And that's what a special use permit is. So when the town created its list of permitted uses, it decided that this is such a special situation that it needs these extra hurdles. I, I agree that.
Yeah.
That I don't think there's anything wrong with this use. But the book tells me you've got to submit a full site plan in order for us to evaluate it.
I worry that to have a purpose of a, you know, of having a special use permit just to provide an opportunity for the board to decide whether it's okay or not. You know, whether we use, consider it safe or not. I mean, it could be interpreted, a special use permit means there could be a problem, but it may not be. And we go before the board, and the board determines if it's safe and if it's, in keeping with.
I would like to think that our regulations or our rules, our ordinances are in place in order to help us avoid problems and maintain public safety and welfare. And buildings are rather orderly fashion. I will step back and say that my primary concern is the question of parking. And while I greatly respect the opinion of staff, I have problems with our parking ordinances in other places and spaces and ways it's manifested. And I think that properly installed crush or run, drive or parkin' lots ought to be something that we should very carefully consider and allow. And moreover, I'm greatly concerned that we not allow our ordinances to, to hinder the redevelopment and the expansion of business opportunities within our downtown, within our current core of the town. I think we all are concerned about the revitalization and continued growth and enhancement of the downtown area. Commissioner Fioco, I think you exemplify these concerns in your many efforts with the Main Street program, et cetera. But I hate for us to allow ordinances that were written in a way that, as Mr. Jones has pointed out, it's kind of questionable. Why on earth would we need to buy this level of scrutiny to a 500-gallon propane tank, which is something that's allowed in residential areas? Just because it's being used to decan into smaller communities? I, I find this a, a very respectable defense for the project. Your rationale stands, it's, it's, makes perfect sense to me. You need to get some revenue coming to improve, to continue to improve the property. I think you've already improved the property. I think your activities there are going to continue to improve the property. So.
If I may add one more thing, in regard to the number of parking spaces, we have proved in the pre-decreating that, yes, technically based on the square footage, we need X amount of parking spots. But because of our businesses, I mean, I've got an online business. I don't have zero, I have zero retail coming in, but I'm occupying more than half the building. All I do is ship packages out of there. All I need is three parking spots, but yet the ordinance is saying that I need 11 parking spots. I'll never use 11 parking spots. Not today, not tomorrow, not another year. It just won't happen. And the same thing with, with Matt. You know, he's been asked to have seven parking spaces. And they have an existing business in Wilmington that's been around for 10 years or better. And they don't have that kind of traffic coming in and out of that area. Nowhere near that. He said he'll be lucky if he has three customers in at one time. Impossible. So. Should like you.
Is it, is it necessary or mandatory to have paid parking in this?
It is, the ordinance allows, allows for unpaid parking for, you know, for the parking areas if you're doing less than 10, if the ordinance requires less than 10. Or if you're utilizing that parking for less than, you know, a certain amount of time over 120 days or so. So there is some ways to massage the, the parking requirement. And we've actually, since last week, worked with the property owner to sort of lessen the on paper what, what we actually have. There's been some re, a relook at his business and other businesses that are in there and recalculation. I think we were up to 27 and.
What is 6?
We're, we're down to 21. 21 now. So we have tried to work within the current rules to get there. And our, our regulations, they pay to town standard. If they didn't say that, then we might not be here.
I mean, I think you raised a really interesting point, and this is something we're going to be seeing more often. It's businesses that don't have a lot of walking traffic that are primarily internet. And it does make sense, you wouldn't need, I don't know how, how you put that to numbers. But I know that's not the existing ordinance that we have.
And, and this board usually wouldn't be the one that would print a bear. And that would be board adjustment. And that's where an app could come, could come in and say, hey, look, I'm an internet-only business. I don't need 11 parking spaces. I need three. And the board could say, could go through all the hardship here and say, yeah, we agree with you. We don't currently have a board of adjustment, so we need to get one. And that's what, that's the avenue that these folks could go, could go to, to ask for a bear.
So what can we do now to help?
I think you could side with the property owner's assessment that there's paid parking there. And we would agree that there is hard parking, but it may not be up to what the town standard is. It has eroded over time and flooding has covered some parking area. But you could take the testimony of the, of the, and this is, say, that there's a public hearing, that there is paid parking there, and side with that testimony over.
Also, let me ask you that, then, Mr. Jones. If it were to be approved with the contingency that the parking lot be paved at a later time when it is financial, financially feasible?
Sure.
You have a deadline?
Sure. You could, you could put in some sort of time in the future.
So that's, that's right in line with the report from the planning board that they asked for such a plan. And, and I, not nearing a second tier motion, Commissioner Fioco, I will make the motion that we approve, approve the special use permit. Or do we also need to find consistency, consistency statement first? Approve the special use permit with the proviso, proviso that owners submit a plan for repaving of the parking. And that, that date to be discussed with staff?
I don't have it really, any problem with that, but I wrote back there again this afternoon and it's, it's, all I could see was about six inches of lime-colored paint on the ground. I was a little concerned turning it around in there. That's how bad it looked back there. You have some concrete, you have some grass, you have some asphalt. So it's definitely a long ways from being a parking lot. And that concern.
I'll admit, I did not mark the parking lot. I showed that to Victoria. All I did was mark the corners of the, what the parking space. I measured eight by 19, and I measured 13 painted. And, and answer to your question about turning in there, we have, you know, 53-foot trucks that come in there to, you know, bring in goods or take, pick up pallets or what have you. And they've always had room to, to back up and maneuver back up to the dock. So a little bit tight.
Let me just copy right now. Actually, the motion on the floor.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's just, all I want to mention is it's just, it's a long ways from being acceptable parking back there myself.
So what's the reasonable balance of time, do you think, for them to get this done?
Well, I think we heard from staff that any additional use that is proposed in this location that would increase the parking requirements would come before staff again and have another opportunity for approval or disapproval based on parking. And so I say let's make it indeterminate, I mean, it's indefinite, because clearly he wants more tenants, he's going to come back, and whatever the next business is that needs parking.
So are we going to require that he, that it be paid?
I don't think you can give another permit for another upset of space or whatnot, so staff would deny that, that there's no plan and no action.
So I think he's going to have an incentive to write a plan that gets him up to speed with parking before he brings in the next-
Excuse me, I was just going to fit the floodplain back there in the back. I saw what, several weeks when we had that couple inches of rain, and it was all the way into your back door, in that curve.
I think-
What's going to happen this weekend?
Staff would definitely not allow for parking to do anything through the floodplain there. They have other property that's actually along Chatham Street that comes there, so there are, there's areas that they can provide parking on site outside of the floodplain. So I think that's where staff would work with that to ensure that they don't really need parking.
So they won't be in parking in the floodplain?
That would be my idea of the situation.
Yeah, we don't want that in the book.
But I think the idea of having it definite, that would not be, there needs to be some time, right, put in there.
A year, six months?
It's a year.
A year, and if, you know, need more time, then that could, that could be the best.
Accept it as a friendly amendment? Is this second time?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly sectioned, all in favor?
Aye.
All again? The ayes have it, and it's approved with stipulations that indicate.
Thank you.
We can now move on to our next item, which is Chatham Park now has a plan, and then additional elements, public and public facilities.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Towne, members of the board. This is continuing discussion on the public facilities element for Chatham Park. As you all know, we've been working on this element since around April or May of this year, and there's been a considerable amount of effort put towards schools and fire and parks as it relates to the public facilities in Chatham Park. We've gotten down to sort of the last few hurdles to get over here, and that is the park section of the public facilities. And there's been a number of discussion points that Chatham Park has put forth, particularly at the 27th meeting in October, there was a couple of discussion items that we can discuss tonight if we need to. But staff has been reviewing the public facilities element, received a redraft of the public facilities element on Thursday of last week, which essentially went along with the lines of the discussion points that were handed to the board at the 27th meeting, and they were sort of codified into that new version that you got. While we've been going through the public facilities discussion, the town's been working on a parks master plan. You had a presentation from the consultant back in early August, Chatham Park had a presentation on parks at the same meeting, and we as staff see the light at the end of the tunnel of the parks master plan. There is a meeting this Wednesday, hopefully the weather holds out, that Paul Corn is hosting at Roadhouse to get with the Parks Advisory Board to, with input from that board and from others, including yourself, you've been invited, and you all have been invited to give comments on the Parks Master Plan. Paul is going to give the presentation at the 24th meeting, so the next meeting, we'll look at the board on the Parks Master Plan and the comments that have been received, and that's when we can have some discussion as to what's in the document again and what comments that have come about. Staff is looking forward to the discussion with the board and others as we lead up to the 24th meeting. We would say that parks is an important part of this community and will be for a long time, and that having a Parks Master Plan somewhat at the final stages is an important step before we make a determination on parks within Chatham Park. Now, there's some things that are in the discussion point and in the public facilities redraft element that you all may decide that those are good things and you want to keep. And there may be things that you want to have some discussion with for Parks Master Plan, on how it informs that. But staff's here, I think Chatham Park is definitely here. Again, if there was a discussion tonight, I think Chatham Park would look towards the discussion points that were handed out at the last meeting and included in the new draft of the public facilities element. And staff can provide comments back and forth on those as well. But I'll entertain any comments that you have or questions.
Questions, comments on the board, Senator Jones?
I just have one comment, reading over this August 27th. It's, Mr. Gruzbeck, if you'll kind of send the first page about the expenditures of number two there. I'll just read it real quick, it says, accepts a deed for the parks land from CP, when the town certifies that it has $3 million matching funds. How long is it going to take us to get, we made the calls matching funds?
It depends on how we receive, how we get the true name notice. I mean, it could be either through grant, through loan, through bond, through donation, it's hard to answer that right now.
Okay.
Well, I went through those bullets at our last meeting, and I was comfortable, I thought they were hitting the target. And Jay, yeah, one of the thoughts that goes into, just from my perspective, that particular item is something that comes directly out of the Parks Master Plan, it talks about partnerships. It says that the town is not going to get the parks it wants by itself, and it's going to have to cooperate and collaborate with a lot of different organizations. And having a requirement that Chatham Park match up to $3 million, up to $6 million in improvements is a good way to form that partnership. So that's what I like about it. And I think what Mr. Gruzbeck just said about where do we get $10 million? One, if we wait long enough, a lot of tax revenue, but I don't think we're going to wait long enough. They would try to go partner with the county honestly, and maybe float a bond. These are things we can do, and we can double our money with this and the additional element. So I think it's a great additional element. And I'll say that I am not in favor of waiting on the master plan. We have been working on these additional elements, this particular set, for probably a year, and we've had input from everybody.
But we haven't had the parks piece for-
We've had a lot of, we've had a lot, we've had a lot of feedback from staff on this, and their comments have been made, and it came down to the very end that we are now going to ask ourselves to kick this down the road another two, three, four months. I mean, we just, we just heard it, okay, perfect schedule, so we're going to do something, have a presentation if weather permits. Weather may not permit it, it's going to kick us back. Chatham Park and this board have been negotiating this for the longest time, and we've got it to where we are in a very good position. And we've got the numbers from Chatham Park. And I've done a little exercise this weekend where I looked at what is the contribution to the public realm, all right, David Mark's language of the public realm, and what it includes, okay? It includes the public sidewalks, the bike lanes, all of that into recreation. It says that it's part of a healthy community. And when we look at what Chatham Park is providing, they're providing over $100 million worth of land dedicated, donated to the town. They're providing $3.5 million, and that's $500,000 per park to make it park-ready, and the town decides what park-ready means, okay? In addition to having two of those park-ready sites, roadways built to them with sidewalks, some will have bike lanes, they will have water, sewer, reclaimed water stubbed to them. So they'll be ready to be developed. They are offering to match up to $3 million for two larger parks. They are going to build 30 miles of greenways at $1 million a mile, that's a $30 million investment. They provided numbers on multi-use trails, $12.5 million, bike lanes, $23 million, sidewalks, $24 million, what they call mini parks, that they will improve, 60 of them, at $150,000 a park, that's $9 million. That's the public side of it. The private side has apartment facilities, and we all know that apartment facilities are providing, and we've seen three of, two come through recently that have clubhouses, pools, dog parks, those types of things. Their numbers say they're going to create $43 million worth of those facilities. Age-restricted apartment facilities, $44 million. HOA facilities, $36 million. YMCA, $13.5 million, for a grand total of $345 million to this town as part of a single project. I think we have worked on this element to the point where I know fire is satisfied, Jay's been working hard with the Chatham Park, Mr. Griffin's back there, he's been working hard, it's got where it needs to be, schools are where they need to be, parks are, by my estimation, in this element where they need to be. And I would like to say that everybody who, I hope that you've probably seen some of this for the first time on being at last meeting, I would like to see this board take action at our next meeting on this element. And if you have comments on these documents, let's put it on the table, we are that close.
I do feel that it has been announced that there would be this public presentation of parks, and I think that hopefully that can still happen, because of the storm, it's supposed to be Tuesday. But I think because we have put this information out there that there's going to be a presentation, I think that it's, that people, they've been promised that they can provide input, I think we need to make sure that happens before we go on it.
I think that they are providing parks, they are providing input on the town's public parks, master plan. And I know from reading that document, that Chatham Park fits very well within it.
Are there just some things that I can put on the table for, for us to think about overnight, a couple of weeks on these bullet points? The first bullet point was the $500,000 per park. That's a wonderful thing to get park-ready. I think our comment to you all is just, it takes a lot more than $500,000 to build all these parks. And just so you all know, that you understand that you and future boards will have to fund parks somehow, and you ask Mr. Gruzbeck, how do we get $3 million, how do we get $500,000, how do we get $100,000 to put towards parks? You know, that's, that's the struggle with parks and making sure that we keep up with development as well. There's going to be certain demands of the town for future residents, future developers that the town performs too. So if we're going to be in this collaboratively together, it's just going to take funds to make that happen. Not the least of which is, where do you get the land to do it? Well, I think that's the leg up that we definitely have here with a developer of this size, is that we are getting land that other communities of our current size don't have on the table. We might have a plan that we would hope to have that, but we have a commitment for at least 667 acres of public park land. So that is a leg up for us to have. It just takes funds and wherewithal to make those parks something other than trees and grassed. So that's a discussion that, and while we go through the master plan, all these, there's concepts of what a local park would be, and estimated amount of what that could be up to $4 million per those local parks. So it's just for you all to consider, that's, we still have a considerable amount of money that we'd have to put out. Two, it sort of flows into what Mr. Farrell was saying, is Chatham currently doesn't have $3 million, so how would we go about doing that? And that's just a comment from us, and that, that's an opportunity for us to do partnerships, and we would go out and look for grants or other funding sources. That's just, we wanted to make that statement. I think there's some nuances of how Chatham Park goes to give the funds to the town, where we have to accept the deed and other things that happen before they expend the money. Think about that over the next couple of weeks after we lead up to it. Is it, what's the mechanism, what's the trigger point for, for funds to be spent on a park to be park-ready? Should we be accepting a deed on raw land and then assuming Chatham Park's going to come through with the, with the funds? Or should there be some negotiation where Chatham Park actually does a little bit of performance before we accept the deed? Think about that a little bit, that was just something that staff would think. That, again, that's on the $500,000 level and the $3 million level.
Does staff have a recommendation?
I would recommend that we don't, I wrote down my comments here, why would we accept a park, a deed to land prior to performance? And that we would want to negotiate, hey, you want to give, you want to make this a park, you want to spend the $500,000 on this park, we all agree that that's what you want to do it, and then we'll take, take the park, we'll take the deed over. To see this struck meet at the 27th meeting, when the certificate of occupancy for the 15,000th residential unit seems awfully high and arbitrary, I'm not sure where that number came from, we're in the North Village and we only got 71, 54 residential units, so that seems like we're throwing-
Big stretch.
It's a big stretch. I think they possibly have the entitlements to get there if we can get through other hurdles, 22,000 residential units, but you may want to ask the African where that 15,000 came from, and maybe some movement on that. To point three, when Chatham Park is going to spend $3 million in the town, may not necessarily have the $3 million to match, there's language that CPI, Chatham Park investors, would specify the improvements to be constructed with these CPI funds. That language seems a little, a little harsh, like, we're not going to be collaboratively working on this new park, they're going to tell us, this is the improvements we're going to do. So I think we need to soften that language, maybe have some collaborative language in there, because really when you're going to talk about these $3 million parks, these larger community parks, most times there's a master plan that is, that the town would go through and say, what's that, that community park look like, what features are there? So I would hope that a master plan would inform the town and future developers as to what the funds need to be spent on. Again, four, talks about spending, Chatham Park's- Again, four talks about spending, Chatham Park specifying where money can be spent. I think that needs to be a collaborative language and not a Chatham Park specifying language. To point five, all four bullet points there, none of the street networks that are, are there, all of them exhibit one or exhibit A, those haven't been approved. So how are we going to tie future bike lanes and multi-use paths to streets that haven't been approved? And why would we want to approve this innocuous document with streets that haven't been through the other approvals of either a subdivision or a small area plan even? So I think there's good language there in the bike lane. I know what the intent is. I just don't want to tie us and the town to streets that haven't been approved. So I think we can work on the language and the intent, let's don't tie it to a map. I'll skip over six, and now I'll go to seven. Seven is about the 250-acre core conservation area in the south, and it talks about the town partnering with YMCA, and the town should do that. Chatham Park will work with the town and YMCA to achieve a partnership. That's a great goal. I'm not sure that's an ordinance-type of language that needs to be in the element. If we're going to look towards this as a document that future developers and staff and boards can, this isn't an ordinance, this is a goal. And we all, you know, today, and we're thinking 30, 40, 50 years from now, YMCA may or may not be around, and we may not, why do we want to beholden ourselves to one entity when there may be other groups that come down the line that would do a similar park or something? House of America, or whomever. I think that's a goal, and that's, we should recognize the goal, but I don't want us, I don't want you all and future boards to be beholden to that. Okay, as it relates to six, I'm not su, this would be a discussion with the applicant. I'm not sure what the angle they're going here. If those areas were accounted for as parks in either the master plan or open space element, and they're trying to change the definition of what these areas are to parks and not open space or some other lands, but they're trying to get, they're trying to get credit for parklands that could otherwise be open space lands or something, we need to figure out what the angle is on that. Why are we trying to redefine what parks is? So I would have you all look to the applicant to kind of guide you through that.
So I agree, and one of the things that we have to find in the master plan is what the numbers are. There will never be less than 1,320 acres of open space. Now, we can take some of the 667 acres of parkland and not develop it, and it would add to the open space, but it would be parkland. So I agree that we are not going to confuse the two, because at the end of the day, we're gonna have almost 2,000 acres of open space and more parks.
Right, right. And this is just an overall comment that I would say to this particular element, more so than the other seven or eight that we've gone through so far, is that language that's in this ordinance or in this element has tended to bleed over to development agreement-type language. And that's okay, because that's what we need to have to get through this, even from a fire perspective or a school perspective, and definitely down to a parks perspective. And for you all to consider that tool along with other tools that are at your disposal to govern what happens in Chatham Park. Again, if the elements are about trying to inform development, some of the, the language in this particular element kind of gets away from that. And I understand why it did that, that's just a general comment from staff. So that's staff's reaction to the 27th handout that you all got.
But that's a preliminary reaction, right?
Well, I think over time, since the 27th, and what we got on Thursday of last week, I mean, that's a pretty good reaction today. I couldn't react like this on Thursday.
But it's not informed by the master plan?
It's not, it is not. There could be discussions that happen over the next, course of the next couple of weeks that speak to development aspects of parks, of local parks, and what we all want to qualify as a local park. And so that aspect, I think, is still, the master plan can inform that. The monetary contributions, the partnership with Chatham Park on park readiness for both local and community parks, that's something that I'm not sure the Parks Master Plan would speak to. It might, but we could have a discussion on how we potentially get funds in the future. Is it, you know, is it bonds using revenue? Is it some other mechanisms, fees or...
Question about the funding. I know that some of the bike lanes, which by the way, I'm really excited about the bike lanes, I think that's gonna be a great addition to the community. My question is, I know that some of the bike lanes will be adjacent to the roads, be connected to the roads, and just be an extra lane, whereas some of the bike lanes, from what I understand, will be away from the roads.
That's right, and that's what the exhibit was trying to show, is where those would be.
Well, my question is, if the bike lanes that are part of the roadway, if that can be designated as transportation in some way, and that we could use funding, the same funding that we use to pay for roads, could some of that go for paying for that? Because that really is transportation, and it's adjacent to the highway, whereas the others are clearly more about parks and recreation. It just seems to me like maybe we could use the same, you know, for the same pile that we use to pay for roads.
I think that could happen.
As far as maintenance goes, the same funding, the same, we use to maintain roads.
Power bill.
Yeah, how the, does that could be used for the bike lanes that are connected to the roads? That would make a difference.
You're describing that the parks, right, master plan might, or one of the goals is to define what a prototypical park is.
I believe that's the answer, yes.
For a local, right?
Yeah.
For that prototypical local park, Chatham Park has committed, I think, 500,000 dollars in addition to all the infrastructure to create.
Right, right. Sidewalks, water sewer, reclaimed, all that to be at that location.
So those two things are separate. One is what's gonna go there. Two is what is Chatham Park gonna contribute.
Right.
And once the contribution is there, then the town will be able to inform them as to what those improvements are, and how best to...
Form the town.
Before we accept the deed, is what you were saying.
I think that's probably what we should do.
And that's the kind of feedback that we need to have. So we could, you know, we can craft that language, because of the other... So that's what I think we need, is very specific language, identifying issues that you find maybe need some work on, and then making recommendations on how to correct the language. I think we need to do that. I mean, we, you know, Jay, Jay's been doing that with Fire Department, with Chief Griffin. They've been going back and forth, saying, no, use this word as opposed to this word. And we need to do that, and finalize this.
I think they, just what you've given us so far, that's the type of things we're looking for.
What do you want to buy more?
Yeah, sure. I think we just want to have this meeting on minutes, hopefully. And then if there's something being incorporated into that, that's fine. But I think we need definitely going to move forward.
So, Mr. Jones, we first received the dish loan on public facilities.
Well, initially, if I can pay it 2016, that was, well, that was the...
Very first drive, man, yes.
And then we received the third set of, because we went through like groups of four, and this was a third set. We received additional language to that in the last year, beginning of this year. Really dived deep into public facilities, starting around, I want to say April is when we started that. But it was really focused on...
First master parks.
We focused really for the first few meetings on schools, getting schools right, you know, ensuring that the county, and the school system, and the town, we were in Chatham Park, all four entities were on the same page. I think we got there. Then we focused a lot on public safety, mostly fire, but police was discussed in that. That was a few meetings. And over time, we've gotten the parks, so that's sort of the third big element of this, third big section of this element. And it's taken us a little while to get here, and in that time, and coincidentally enough, we've gotten to the end game closely, closely, for the Parks Master Plan. And by timing as it is, we're going to have a fuller discussion on parks now that we have a Parks Master Plan in front of us. If the Master Plan tells us anything, it should tell us what we want to see, how many we want to see, how do we, suggestions on funding, sources, suggestions on what is a local park, who maintains local parks, is it all-town, or are we okay with private parks being satisfying the residents that it serves? And so there's discussions along that. I think staff believes that everything doesn't necessarily have to be public, as long as it's serving the needs of that community. However, we know that there's gonna be a considerable amount of public land with Chatham Park. And the Master Plan is not just for Chatham Park, it's for the town. We have to think outside of Chatham Park and create these local parks for others in town, where we don't currently have them. So we want to make sure that whatever we apply to Chatham Park, we can apply to other developers.
Personally, I don't believe a park that's not open to the public should count as a town park. If it's not open to the public, it's not a park, it's not a town park.
So I think that's part of the discussion as to what goes to park recreation needs of a community, and satisfying the residents that would go to a pool in the neighborhood or some other, you know, clubhouse or something like that. That may serve that need for that residential area, but then offset that with public parkland elsewhere. And it's a balance between a public and private, because we would have to have a lot more land outside of even 667 acres to have a robust level of service that we need, if everything had to be maintained by the town. I think, I think we ought to recognize that.
And then can you use public-private partnerships for things like that as well?
Yeah. I think you can, and there could be examples shared of where it's working well and where's, you know, same number.
Like Thomas Park.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we've acknowledged that some of the parkland will be private in a sense.
Correct. But if it's open that the town is maintaining, it should be open.
And it will be, yes.
So another piece of public facilities that we discussed in our last meeting was public works. Have we, any additional thoughts on that?
Yeah, I've just got some slides on what I think a public works, a future public works facility would be beyond some of our more immediate needs, which we have in the capital requirement.
Thank you. So, yeah, I think it's shaping up. I think the public is curious about the numbers, Commissioner Philco, as you've shared, what Chuck Smith from Chatham Park Investors has shared regarding their plans for financial investments. Those numbers need to be public.
They have been presented to the board.
They've been presented to the board. I don't think they're on the official record yet. I don't think they are on the website, unless someone scanned the hard copy that Mr. Smith distributed. And Mr. Smith is planning on adding it, typed up and distributed, so. I think it very much supports the case for the strength of this additional element, but that needs to be public. So, you know, it's...
I wonder if that will be part of the presentation on Wednesday, that you need?
I think it's just staff's work.
Yeah, that would come back to you, probably.
That's like... So it's, the oven light is on, the cake is rising, it looks good. It's not done yet. It's working, it's getting done. John, what do you think it takes to get it done? I would very much like to see our master plan, our Parks Master Plan completed, and an analysis done, crosswalk between what has been proposed in this additional element and what we're contemplating with our master plan.
We're looking at what we have currently written, so hopefully there's no changes in the applicant, and we'll do the analysis.
Oh, and the final piece on public works?
I kind of need to be clear on exactly what you're looking for, though, before I...
What does staff need for public works inside of 2,200 acres? What does it need for 7,200 acres?
Yeah, I've just kind of, I've looked at what our, what our public works and utilities needs are gonna be, given the scale and growth curve and development over the course of time, if we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, that needs to be in this element. My member staff's support is my support. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Can we, I'll just make this, because like you said, Chief Griffin and myself and some of Chatham Park, we have been working diligently with this fire element. Can we assume that it is acceptable to the board?
Are you giving it a thumbs up?
Yes, sir, all means.
Yeah?
Thanks, you heard me.
Absolutely.
Your expertise on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrell. Moving forward now with Huron Road water system improvement.
Good evening. So earlier this year, I know that you have already been familiar with this project, where the town contracted with Hydrostructures to begin, looking into a water line to serve the Huron Hill community. This project has been delayed a bit, and so we wanted to give you an update of where we are, now that I've gotten to the board and been working with Hydrostructures. And so in your packet was a couple of maps, but we've got one here that kind of shows a little bit of what the project itself will entail, and a little bit of an update on the schedule that's gonna be coming along. But the main thing to touch on was that this project involves taking services that were provided to the group of residents in this area, from a two-inch service line that served meters and services, to an eight-inch public water line that will go down Huron Road. Currently, there is not a water line in Huron Road, and so this will be creating a new water line along that path. That would give me a pointer.
It won't point on the screen.
It won't point on the screen. Then that would be mine. This will work right here. So this portion of the line that is not a water line in this area, and so the water currently is being served from a two-inch service that comes up this way and serves both directions. A lot of this area had these water services and meters that are in an area that is not our typical location for meters to be served. So if this project continues and we set this new water line, there are gonna be water meters that will have to be reset along the right-of-way and services established there. Something to be aware of is with this project, there are likely gonna be some of these services that will have some private work that will need to be done. Currently, that's not in the budget that was previously presented, and where we Currently, that's not in the budget that was previously presented, and where we are operating for right now, it is setting those water meters and services at the right-of-way. So any work that's done beyond the right-of-way to tie back in generally is done through a plumbing situation, and that might be something that a private property owner would have to take on if the town did not step up and take that part on. Currently, that is not a part of this project, so I want to make sure that you're aware that we're talking about ten services that could, six to ten, that could be affected by this. So that is something that we will continue to look at. If there is a change in cost or a desire to explore that further, we can bring that process back to you at a later time. The process of delaying the schedule on this has come from a couple of things, changes in staff and also having a lot of things that we asked of Hydrostructures over the last several months. And so we've asked for an updated schedule on how this, from this point forward, looks. And so they are anticipating they can wrap up the design from what I tell them after we discuss this, if there's any changes that happen to come from our discussion tonight, by October 1st. And with that, it would allow them to begin the process of getting permits and easements and get the bid documents ready and begin construction in the... I'm sure I'm reading... To be able to open bids and start that process in February or March, with the bulk of the construction happening between April and July. Most of it would be wrapped up in July. They always have a little bit of a cushion on the back end that flows out the project. So wrapping this whole thing up by July, August timeframe of next year. So with that, I will open the floor if there's any questions. Otherwise, we will keep working and let you guys know and update if there's anything further to share as we continue.
Should we notify some of the residents over there regarding that they may be in to some kind of expense regarding from the meter to their home? Because I'm sure there's some problems there also.
That's probably something that's going to have to be a part of our project because there will be a point in time in which their water service will no longer be available where it is currently, and they need to know what to expect, and the timeframe and the costs associated with changing that over. So we can let them know how that process is a part of this project.
We don't want to interrupt their service.
No, and we don't want surprises for anybody. I will say that there are some situations here where we have found that there are multiple services off of one meter. And so we are aware of that on a couple of occasions.
I don't like slow the flow.
So there is likely that there will be new meters needed that are not currently existing in order to service the people who are receiving town water.
Do we also have a situation where parks is in town and parks isn't?
I don't believe any of this area is in the town limits.
So it's all outside of town?
The whole area is outside of town limits. Is it ETJ or is it... ETJ, okay.
It's where it's all located.
Okay, so it is in the ETJ. Any other questions? Thank you.
Moving forward now with new bids. Chief, with Pittsburgh Fire Department, who's...
Thank you. Adam Mayor Protest. I can certainly begin the presentation and discussion on this, and I see Mr. Masick in the audience as well, and he can elaborate on anything that I'll probably shout here. You have in your packet a cover memo with the proposed language for the agreement with Pittsburgh Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department Incorporated. This is the same entity that the town has contracted with for a number of years. We are in, have been in discussion to have an agreement carried forward. As you can see in the language, the term would be effective this past July of one and would extend for a five-year, as proposed, would extend for a five-year period. The changes, I kind of, there were three main highlights that I had in the cover memo that are reflected in the agreement. And that is that this year's current budget would remain the same, which began on July 1st, so the appropriation would remain the same. In future years, we will be looking at, in essence, a rate recommended by the county manager for a certain old city fire district, which is the county portion of the district or the non-town portion of the district, and that would be multiplied by the valuation of the property. I believe the current rate this year is, as given to us, was a little bit over 12 cents per $100 of assessed value. And so that, that revenue would then be, would then be paid to the fire district over four different payments over the course of, over the course of this little year, in consideration of fire services and other services reflected in the agreement. And then the other thing to point out would be that later in the agreement, back in paragraph 11, Section B, we contemplated contingency for the town to assume fire department's assets if the fire department were to, for some reason, cease to exist or default or what have you. And so those were the major items of discussion to this point. Again, we can, we proposed it for a five-year term. We may consider a lesser, lower term if we want to evaluate performance. Otherwise, this would be, this would be the language at this point that we've built forward. Mr. Masick, I don't know if I could... It's probably still a negotiation with the chief back there. Mr. Masick, did I cover everything?
You did, you did cover. If there are any questions, I'd like to answer.
So that is, that is what we have this evening, and with that, I'd open it up for any comments, questions, concerns that you have. If this is to your satisfaction, or if you have suggested language, then you'd be asking for approval for signature, and then you could move it forward. Thanks.
Any questions from the door?
I'd just like to learn a little bit more about the fire department.
Come on down.
Excuse me.
Say, "Come on down."
Well, if I may, I'll ask a couple of questions. I have quite formulated them, but there's a provision for what I feel concerned is unlikely to have a default by the fire department. Does the fire department, I assume you do have financial controls or some means of tracking expenditures and all that?
Yes, sir.
Take the debt?
Yeah, well, we have a...
Chief Griffin, please, thank you.
There are written, by Chief Pittsburgh. Yeah, each year we do, doing all of which the town Pittsburgh is, we have a board of directors also. We have a secretary, we have a treasurer that takes care of all the money. You know, with our operation, I do operations, and our board takes care of all the financing. How many full timers do you have? Twenty-two right now. Trying to hire three more right now. Wow. Yes, sir. Sounds good.
Any additional questions, Chief?
Question, Brian. Can you provide an estimate of the difference in the amount of money budgeted under the 12.225 cents in comparison to what we have budgeted this year?
Yes. Chief and I talked about this, and I think even Mr. Masick had a discussion, and I don't recall what the number figure was off the top of my head, but it was close.
So we're paying about this rate today? Correct. Yes. We were all for a penny, but that was like $2,500 difference at the final outcome. So this is on park, will grow as tax revenue? Yes, sir. Which apparently represents the land? Yes, very much so. Okay. There is mention here of what's the contingency in, if there is a default, always good to have it, it has to happen. But one of the things I've been thinking about in the additional element on the fire element is, what has really got me thinking about it, is what happens when the town makes the fire department part of its operation? And I've been thinking about, you know, the fact that Chatham Park is going to be donating land. There was the idea that they might be buying equipment, building buildings, but that's upstate with the government. But the idea is the dedication of land. And right now, the element has been changed to say the town handle a fire services provider. So the town is making an active decision on who owns that land. I think it'd be an appropriate time to start the conversation about what happens if, when the town says, "We're going to have our own fire department." And the conversation could revolve around your assets, you know, how those assets are traded. Obviously, the county's got a hand in there, so I would, I'm supportive of the contract, and I think it would be an appropriate time to move forward, trying to define what happens when, if, so that when that day comes, we've thought about it, worked on it, especially given the fact that Chatham Park's about to happen.
Well, I had similar thoughts. I didn't articulate them, or didn't articulate them at all, but in my own head, they were just swirling, so I appreciate your articulating that. And that's kind of why I was, the question of financial controls, because that's one way in which I can imagine there being a benefit of the fire protection institution operation being inside the town's operation because an audit costs money. And it's possible that some dollar savings could be created from having one audit of the entire operation, or from the financial controls or from the administration. So I think it is probably going to be a question that evolves at the point when we recognize that there's benefits to having fire being a part of our operations rather than a separate organization. Does that make sense?
It does. And with that, it would cost the town three times of what you're paying now. Just when the town decides to incorporate, every rule of the forest from the OSFAM changes, town will be responsible for a minimum of 20 people from the get-go. Workers comp, we get a big discount through VFRS insurance. Just a lot of, a lot of changes when you become part of a municipality. A lot of the breaks and stuff we get now, you know, give or lose, and it could end in the cost of the town. A whole lot more money.
And I'm sure that's a path that's been studied before with other municipalities.
I agree you have so many fireworks contracting because it gets so costly for a town smaller. I agree, in 10, 15 years, or sooner, you know, with town parks, and we're, you know, when we have eight, nine, 10 million dollar fire budget, you know, it would be irrelevant word of my cost at that time, but... I'd say that's up to y'all on that form. So I'll make the most of your group.
Chief Griffin. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Mr. Protest, we're going to do your updates now, please.
Sure. Thank you again, Adam Mayor. Just a couple of things to mention to you this evening. Before we adjourn, we, I'm sure you've read the forecast, we're supposed to deal with a rain later this week. So much rain, they're calling it Hurricane Florence. As of right now, we have an operations plan that our chief, Roberson, has developed, an operations plan similar to what we've done for other weather events in the past, and we'll be distributing that to you and other key stakeholders in the community. And that operations plan essentially settles out for how we will handle the event organizationally and what some of our contingencies are. So it would be, since we, since I get out of here tonight or tomorrow, you should have that, and so should others. Utilities department is currently cleaning curbs and gutters and things of that nature and trying to have everything as clean as possible. We've got our chainsaws oiled up and ready to go. In fact, Mr. Popee is asking some of the personnel team to take chainsaws, hold them Wednesday night because they want to have them cut their way in, which is kind of an odd thing to think about, like you guys have been around and it certainly happens. So we have generators lined up, and tomorrow, I believe, there's a briefing at Chatham County Emergency Operations Center. And so the community, I think, as well as the state, is prepared, first you know about the emergency declarations that have happened. We do have part of the operations plan that you'll, you'll be receiving, does have a template for emergency, state of emergency declaration for the talent that should come to that point. Oftentimes, we'll, through coordination with the county, you can sort of decide what, you know, what types of, what types of actions are going to be needed for different rain events, and so we'll be sorting through that probably tomorrow. But we do, we are prepared for that event if it does happen, so. The, I will be attending in your, back up a little bit, the, in the consent agenda, you have approved a resolution for the, I cannot pronounce this, where I can?
Rooting, yeah.
I will be going to, going to that gathering tomorrow to present the resolution and mayor respects to that, to that group, so I'm looking forward to that. And another issue that I'd bring up that's a little bit off script, Mayor Perry has requested that, that we start our next meeting at 6:00 PM to receive some discussion on the special assessment district in that meeting. So unless there is, unless there is an issue, or if you guys have any problems in doing that, if you do have any problems with that start time on the 24th, then we can certainly consider another date for that. So I guess before I get too far down the track, is that going to work for folks?
I haven't had trouble with it.
6:00 PM on September, excuse me, yes, September 24th.
You should run them down here. I'll be traveling back from all over. Yeah, I've had a long day.
Last week, police chief process, replacement process last week, I participated with interviews for the vacant Sider City Police Chief. They're also going through a process, helped interview three different candidates. There was a, in addition to the interviews, which I took part in the interviews, there was exercises and role-playing and some community presentations, so it was really kind of a neat thing to be a part of. I'm, I'm more or less convinced that I'd like to go through a similar exercise, so I'll be soliciting proposals for search firms to assist with the process. There'll be some community input and involvement with that that affirm similar to the master to help us with, so. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, it's a, it's a, I think, a really good path to go forward on, if anything, to kind of keep the process moving forward. So more information on that will be coming. With regard to Dioxin-1, comma, 4, you recall some of our efforts and the mayor's efforts on that. Closer to home, Pittsburgh Water Treatment Plant continues to work with NC State and some of their faculty monitoring the dioxin levels. They collect treated water samples daily, and then they compile weekly averages to help determine concentrations. And the time that we've been doing it, Mr. Pickett indicates that there are currently low concentrations. I was wondering if this is high rainfall, but again, we need more data points to kind of sort through that, and folks over at NC State helping with that. Also indicating, Mr. Pickett's also indicating that he's looking forward to collecting raw water samples at the HOFF intake where we collect our raw water prior to any event, because right now, we're looking at treated water. So we're going to try to mash that up with, with the raw water and, again, just kind of provide more points to look at. So we'll probably have at least Mr. Pickett in to help discuss that a little bit, once we have a little bit more to discuss. So Parks Plan, we talked about that quite a bit tonight. I won't do any much more. So, Parks Plan, we talked about that quite a bit tonight, I won't go into much more detail on that. The 2017, 2018 Annual Audit, time flies when you're having fun, it's that time of year again, and Reeves and Associates will be at Town Hall in this room during the last week of September, looking to submit that in October, and then I think I'm penciling in, let's see, in upcoming meetings, I'm penciling that in for the first meeting in November for the presentation, more or less assuming that they, that the L G C, as Local Government Commission, has accepted it at that point, but I think we've done presentations even prior to acceptance. So, I'm not quite sure that's how that's gonna work out, that's what I'm shooting for a little bit earlier this year, compared to last year, just to kinda keep us moving forward, and I'd like a process for next year. And then, I'll just stay here on this, on this here, just, we do have some old business coming up that's been requested, to take another look at hotel incentives, so if you have any thoughts on that, or any comments, questions, concerns on that, in the meantime, let me know. Otherwise, we'll be revisiting that issue with request of Mr. Bradley, who's been involved with the Mosaic project. Mr. Nass will be here at the next meeting to go over our revenue distribution agreement that we've done in years past, and talk a little bit more in terms of update from A B C. And then, I guess the last thing I'd point out is that, well, two more things, system development fees, the public hearing will be at the next meeting, and then we could either take action during the meeting of the 24th, but I'd put down October 8th, so either one, I guess, is technically okay, I don't know that we typically take action following the public hearing, but that's, I guess, there's nothing technically prohibiting that. So, anyway, I've kind of put in the longer timeline there. Finally, last thing that I'll say, and I'll promise, there's probably more to talk about, but I don't believe we've received anything from Eagles yet, but I do have that, assuming on the calendar for you, assuming the planning board has had a chance to look at it, so, in case you're wondering what's happening with that, so... With that...
I have the thing, the planning board.
So, what is, what's going on with that?
They're working through the hydrant issue on the side of East Street, I guess, that's where they're...
Sorry?
You're trying to make a mark, I think.
So, I thought that those issues were addressed during the first presentation?
Yeah. They're relying on some hydrants, but now, probably needs to retrofit it a bit, so we're gonna have to go further, force elsewhere.
Okay. Low pressure?
Remember, they, remember, be an alternative...
One massage, yeah.
There are just four options of the machine.
Yeah.
I think that, I think we're there.
They're very close.
Yeah. It seems odd that there was such urgency on the part of, on their part. Was this, was this discovered after?
It was discovered, the second round of planning.
It was, okay. Okay, and Mr. Messick, can we have your opinion? I'm curious about whether or not this might be in any way contributive, us delaying their project?
No, I tried to call the Eagles attorney today, and I think she was in court. I think part of the delay was that they didn't wanna bring it before the planning board in August, because I was not going to be there. I'm not sure what the status of it is now, but I know that the hydrant issue came up after the first cover-up. But I don't know what's going on with that. But no, I don't think, they not asked for it to be done, and I thought they had cooperated and asked for it to be postponed from the earlier version side. I don't think the town is culpable at all at this point.
Yeah. And does this have any, does this put any kind of jeopardy as regards their effort to litigate?
Well, hasn't slowed it down, no, sir. No, it's still pending.
Comments, questions, we should rule back. Did anyone else have any updates?
I did a question.
Did you?
Yes. And I have a county fair coming up, but have you already told me the date and when that will be coming?
That's my package.
Sorry.
But I will, I will do that. Thanks for that. It is in September.
Yes.
It is September 27th.
Mayor, then, Mr. Bryant's back here, he knows when to...
This is Carl Bryant.
Yes.
Could you come forward?
Yes.
Yes, I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
That's right, thank you, Mark. It's not your fault.
So, it's been held, the 27th to the 30th?
27th to the 30th.
No, it's on Thursday, then on Sunday. Sunday morning, Sunday morning, the 30th, we have a special, we have a program in the exhibit on, on the 11th to 12:30. So, everybody didn't know, they didn't pay attention.
So, when can people start submitting their pies and their vegetables?
Okay, Thursday morning, can't fall easy. So, we bring them early Thursday morning, and have to be in before 10:00, because the judge comes in and adjusts them before 10:00.
So, that's just the parish bowl?
That's right, and I always start Monday.
The preceding Monday?
Yeah, the exhibits, he planned exhibits.
Okay.
Run short, so, whatever we can do, volunteer, we did all that too. Make the town more successful, and make it fast, he's on rolling for 59 years.
So, this is a 69-year start?
Yes, it started in 49. So... Oh, yes. My father gave the first land to build the first art building on, in 49. So, I did go there and sit there. Some member of my family there on the staff board, 69 years.
So, your family's still very involved, or is it...
Yes, very much, or mostly, I mean, now, because everybody passed out, passed on, yeah. Where my brother, two years ago, Willie, everybody knew him. See, I was away and fed at the first effort, because now he's in service station, minimum market, but I always came home back to the fella, every year, and then the fourth time during the year. So...
You have to get your Linda back here.
Oh, definitely will, yeah, she died with her mother's mother for the last four or five days, because her mother's kid is failing. She doesn't seem to have a pre- or a pre-fate. The other daughter lives in our garage, she comes up regularly, yeah. So, thank y'all so much.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
My little father's here, y'all there with the exhibit.
We look forward to being there, yes, sir.
And pass the word on, and thank you so much.
Take pictures again, let's take pictures.
Y'all definitely so.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Anyone else have any updates?
Very much, yes.
I do have one. The F M said, Tranjade Council Government Economic Summit will be on September 27th, 2018, 9:30 A. M. to 5:00, and it will be held in Sanford, North Carolina, at the Dennis Whitaker Civic Center. So, if you all would like to go, you would have to pay a registration fee, and I'm planning to attend, Mr. Rusek said.
We'll tell you when you can sign up.
That's on Thursday. And it should be very, very good, because it will be different county and municipal elected officials, as well as we have several speakers coming, so it will be very eye-opening.
What's the topic again?
Well, the, the, it's economic growth knows no boundaries. So, the keynote speaker, developing regional workforce, that's one keynote. Let's double. So, that's all that I have, and I hope everyone else can, that would be great.
I don't think I'll be able to.
That's okay. No.
Yeah, I've been working a lot overtime, but they have, but I don't have an update on climate change, but I do have some concerns, are we going to, Commissioner, to...
Yes, now, yes, thank you.
We can go from this end of that end this time.
Good.
So, I'm not the last one spiking up. I'm curious about the status of the N C D O T whitehead plan work.
The status is, we, y'all offer us the special amendment, we'll have to ask, they've received the, our funds, and they have selected, I believe, preliminary selected the Halta Plan to do the work, and we're just finalizing those details, and hopefully that will start, you know, here in the next few weeks.
Well, N C D O T managed their contract, or will be?
They will manage, yeah.
Will they plan the bulk of the money?
Yeah, yeah, it was a good way for us to get a plan, and know that it's going to be, be able to be carried through, so it's one of the things that's going to happen.
Sure. I guess my one concern on that is, N C D O T's conception of whitehead is one thing, and I think that, you know, a very rigorous, modern interpretation incorporating health and environment and transportation efficiency and Parks Recreation considerations would come out with a different type of approach to whitehead planning.
It's administered and led by Halta, if they get the contract, but it will, there's an advisory committee that needs to be put together, that will consist of staff, and I know the Health Department is gonna have someone on there, Police Department, Parks Recreation will have person on there, so...
Okay.
They actually, not mandated, but highly suggested you have across the board, representation from various organizations, council agents, cops like that.
That's reassuring, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we're on that.
Thank you. I just didn't know how that was going to unfold, so I'm pretty sure about that. Second concern, Mr. Rusek, I was very enthusiastic here, you've been thinking about software for managing board agendas, minutes and orders and such, should you, additional thought on that, or...
I haven't, I haven't done anything with that in the last couple of weeks, would require, it's, that's a non-budgeted item, so it's not a priority, but it is something certainly that, as I indicated a few times over the years that I've wanted to do, so, we don't have any of that yet.
Okay. So, is that something you think will, will progress during the next year, or for lack of budget, or is it...
It's possible, yeah.
All right, and final thing, so I just wanna thank you again for responding to the concerns that I've heard as regarding animals and chains and dog watching, constituent for that to me, and I really appreciate, Mr. Rusek, your detailed response, because that makes it very much easier for me to respond to that citizen. Thank you.
One concern, just check in on the SCADA system and location on the tower.
Yeah, they, I think, tried to make those contacts, I haven't heard whether or not they have a schedule or any sort of plan for it, but there's been apparently some effort to have conversations, but I don't know how that's gonna solve yet.
Yeah, the, the folks seem to be pretty accessible and interested in getting it done, so, good opportunity for us, thanks.
I don't have any concerns, I'm just gonna be attending two meetings this week, one is for the Chatham County Human Relations Board, and the second is the Chatham County Parks Council Board, so, representing the county, those two are...
Only thing I got is just to kinda echo what the Police Department or the Fire Department will be out, we're gonna have full staff, all volunteers and paid people will be coming in probably Thursday morning and probably be here through the weekend, so, we'll be out full force.
Is there anything additional from anyone?
Other than I would like to direct everyone's attention to the letter we got from the League of Municipalities, that's very important, that the General Assembly has passed, it's bill, which indicates that the public schools may have to be funded by the local municipal...
It hasn't passed?
Yes, it has passed.
It provides the ability...
The ability to do it.
Yeah, and so they wanted to make sure that municipalities be aware of this, in some ways, I think it actually originated so that municipalities could fund, because currently or previously, they were not, they were not legally capable to fund schools, and so some municipalities wanted to take the step of providing funding to it, but I don't know whether this says is a good thing or a bad thing about me, but I kinda, I kinda looked at it the other way and said that I think we need to be aware of it, not, and not as any reflection on our current, or on our local school system, but the possibility could be that schools would come to municipalities to ask for the funding, because that's, I think, where the rubber really hits the road for us, so, thank you for bearing that on.
If there's nothing additional, and we need a motion to...
I have a...
900.
Is this a record?
Yeah.